Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Tuesday, December 17th Select Board Meeting. This meeting will be broadcast live and recorded by Foxborough Cable Access. We will start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Paul, will you lead us?
Sure. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Anybody here for assistance input? Nope. Anybody online? Okay. We'll move along. I'm going to guess our new conservation agent. Fabulous. Why don't you come on up here and introduce yourself?
Hello.
Hi, how are you?
You're welcome.
I know, I messed this up in my own Conservation Commission meeting. Anyways, I'm Nadia. It's nice to meet everyone and happy to be here. Only been my second week, but I've been plenty busy already doing lots of site visits and things like that. But yeah, I came from Mass D.P. in Worcester, got some experience there, but I've always wanted to be in conservation and more kind of dealt in conservation. I minored in that in college as well, so that's kind of where I came about for my experience.
Good. How do you pronounce your last name?
Shalick.
Shalick.
Yep.
Awesome. So, do you live local or are you from the Worcester area?
I'm from the Worcester area. I've lived in Upton my whole life, but I've been in Foxborough all the time for Gillette.
Oh, awesome. That's great.
Yep. I at least know that area, so yeah.
So, I mean, obviously Jane was here for a long time, so very big shoes to fill. And, you know, we take conservation very seriously in this town.
Yes.
So, that's great. So, so far, so good.
Yep.
Anything, you know, strike you right off the top of your head that, you know, that you're, is going to be something you're interested in, you know, taking, taking on to begin or still kind of getting your feet wet?
That's a good question. I would say overall, still getting my feet wet, but I do have like certain conservation areas that I'm really passionate about, like, you know, just going to site visits too. And like I was just, you know, at a site visit, talking about beavers and things like that. So, I'm very like, you know, I want to, you know, protect wildlife, protect, you know, flora and fauna. I think I've probably shared that similarity with Jane a little bit, which is nice. But I think, you know, I've always been interested in like trails, heard about like, you know, improving signage, that's like another thing. But I think really just conservation overall, and I think for me, it's like a lot of learning. So, just, you know, getting my feet wet, doing a lot of learning about what there is in town and, you know, what people have to say and, you know, obviously helping them and helping, you know, staff and things like that.
Did you go to that college up in Worcester or?
Yes, I went to WPI.
WPI?
Yep. Yep. I majored in environmental engineering and then I designed my own minor since they didn't have conservation, so I minored in conservation and applied ecology.
Good school, WPI.
Yes, yes. Expensive, but good.
They're all expensive.
Yep. Yep. Especially nowadays.
Our Chris Gallagher went to WPI. Have you talked to him about that? He's a town, a DPW director.
Yes.
I didn't, I didn't make that connection until you just said that.
I actually didn't know he went to WPI, but next time I see him, I'll talk to him. Yeah.
So, I think the one thing that we're looking forward to is with Jane being out as she was, we, and we kind of heard of it too, when the residents complained about some signage that had fallen into disrepair, is I think it became very apparent how important the stewardship of our open spaces is. And so, we are looking forward to Nadia getting out there and, you know, keeping an eye on our open spaces and working with the Conservation Commission to make sure that those important amenities are taken care of and accessible to our residents. And so, that was something that I don't think, not that I took it for granted, but I, I knew Jane was out in the field, but I think we really saw what happens when you're not out there regularly. So, we're looking forward to Nadia taking on that role. And I'm sure most conservation folks love to be outside, so I'm sure that's not going to be a challenge for her.
No issue for me.
Yeah, exactly.
Yep.
But Catherine's been working with her and getting her up to speed and, yes, she's been a welcome addition.
Thank you.
As you're getting through the chaffs, okay?
Go right ahead and talk.
As you're getting your feet wet, I remember the last time we were with Jane, West Street, we did a site visit and she went to her car, slipped on her water boots that went up to her knees and just started going to areas. Remember that? You were with us.
Yep.
And said, "Where's Jane?" And she's just in, you know, up to her knees and, so I'm sure you have your pair of water boots in the back of your car.
Yes.
I was on advisory committee here. I happen to have, I was, was one of her liaisons before budget and stuff, and it was always just so cool to go in. She was always so excited on what she was working on and the little, she gave us every year, I said, "You gave me one last year." I have it at home, a little book with all, with everything, the frogs and lizards and butterflies and everything that's going on.
Yep.
So, congratulations, Deb. Anything?
Thank you.
Welcome and good luck.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Same thing.
Yeah, I got, I have a lot of resources to still go through with, with Jane because I'm, you know, in her office. I have the conservation guide, open space guide, and a lot of, you know, turtle species and salamander species and just a lot of paperwork to go through, but it's all good. I'm, you know, again, it's learning and then also, you know, doing, you know, my interests, which I think I, I shared with Jane, so that's, that's pretty cool.
And Nadia will be helping out with the Open Space and Recreation Plan. That's something that is almost to the finish line and we're looking forward to her assistance to get us over that finish line.
Yep.
Great. Welcome so much.
Welcome.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Okay. Next, we have a review from the Audit Committee. Paul?
How are you?
Good. How are you?
Sorry about that. So, Paul Ivanovska is Chair of the Audit Committee accompanied by Marie Almodovar. So, last time we met, we, I think it was on Zoom when we had this conversation, we talked about the fact that Foxborough had the same company doing our financial audits for at least 20 years, long enough that the auditor, when we asked him how long he'd been doing our audits, said he didn't remember, but he predated Randy. That was his benchmark of, and my recollection is Randy was appointed, appointed in 2004, so he'd been here for a long time. So, it's not a good practice. And so, we went, we went out with an RFQ. So, I want to pause there to commend Marie and Brandon for all the work they did on the RFQ. It's a, it's a fairly complex document. It's aimed at making sure you're doing a lot of prequalifying before you send it out. And that's important because the world of audit has changed a lot. And so, now there's a handful of very big auditors out there doing work and maybe a few boutique auditors. And so, the RFQ that they put together was intended to, essentially, it said you need to have at least 50 municipal audits in the last five years, I think was the number, as a sort of baseline for, for making sure that they had a certain amount of experience. So, we got three respondents. I would describe them as, one is sort of a boutique auditor. They're mostly located in Rhode Island. They have three municipalities in Massachusetts, I think, and that's Sahadi and Hague. And then we had two of the more global type auditors, as you think of them, that was CLA and then there was Markham, which was acquired as we were talking to them. So, they're now known as CBIZ, which is a lot more catchy, but they are an even more global company. So, those are the three we, we got submissions from. They were fairly dense submissions. The audit company went through all of those and then we met with all of them and we interviewed them. And I would say, I mean, the interviews all went reasonably well, but we did come away with a fairly strong feeling about one of the auditors. But before we talk about who that is, let's talk a little bit about how we evaluated the auditors. Any questions up to this point? No? So, the state of Massachusetts has a massive document called the Local Officials' Guide to Procuring and Administering Audit Services. And in it, it does give you some sort of criteria for evaluating an auditor, once you have them in front of you. So, cost, depth of expertise, do they show a systematic approach to the audit? What's their capacity and responsiveness? What feedback do you get from other municipalities on the auditor, which turned out to be fairly important for this? And then any other considerations you're looking at, value added, et cetera. So, I just want to go through these very quickly. Cost. I mentioned that Sahadi was a boutique style auditor. They came in at $61,000 a year and that escalates year over year. We are currently paying 41 something for Robert, is that right? 41 for Robert Brown Consulting. Marie had talked about in our previous discussions that they're a very small company and the odds were very good that when we went out to market, that the price was going to go up pretty substantially. Sahadi came in at 61, CLA came in at 78, and then Markham at 85. Okay? And then in subsequent discussions with CLA, they came down to 75. So, that's the cost. I'm going to skip out of order and talk about feedback from other municipalities. So, Marie reached out to a bunch of towns. I was surprised at the number of responses she got. I think there were 17 or 18 of them. And I'm going to summarize them like this, which is the two larger auditors had fairly good feedback. Markham had pretty good feedback, I would say, and we got five responses. We got nine responses on CLA and it was, it ranged from very good to stellar. And then for Sahadi, we got four responses. I'd say two were good, two liked them, one was sort of on the fence and one disliked them enough because of their responsiveness and their dragging out of the workflow that they were going to actually go to bid rather than work with them again. So, any, it's a different environment, Bill. Like in the private sector, you'd never get that feedback, but in the public sector, it's all public.
No, I know. I'm an accountant. I started in the CPA world, but the, I was just surprised that they used them as a reference in, in bringing them out.
They don't have to. They, I mean, it's all, it's all public information out there. And I don't know where you got the list to email all these towns.
Yeah, well, these, these were all actually provided by the.
Well, the alternative is they haven't gotten that feedback yet, though. If the town's going to market and saying they're very unhappy with them, they probably have. Anything you'd add on the feedback?
No, I think, I think you summarized it, you know, pretty well. With CLA, I do, having my certified governmental accountant certification, I do, I have to attend several conferences and meetings and things like that. And you typically see either CLA or Markham giving presentations on best practices, things like that. So, they're very well-known firms. Obviously, the price is up there, but with some of these larger firms, it, I mean, it is recommended to change every five to seven years, but when you go with one of these larger firms, they can literally just switch the team that they send out to the town, so you don't have to go through this process, you know, every, you know, every five to seven years. You end up with a brand-new team. It's essentially like having a new auditor. But, um, yeah, overall, I think you covered them.
Yeah, actually, I was looking at my notes and there's a couple of things I'd call out. One was, well, when we talked to one of the people working with Sahadi, they said, "We don't want to work with them anymore, but we'd love CLA." Even though that wasn't their current auditor, they had worked with them in the past. Someone talked about CLA saying, "Having a firm that's professional, knowledgeable and always willing to provide advice and guidance and a timely manager is truly, in a timely manner, is truly a worthy investment." We had one of the towns talk about CLA's IT audits. So, IT has become a more and more important part of audits. In fact, it was just codified as part of the audit standard whose initials they can never remember, SAS or what's?
The, talking about gap?
Yeah. Well, the audit guidelines now require an IT audit as part of the process. And one of the towns called up CLA's IT audit, which they have a specialist that does that as eye-opening and important, so.
It's included in the price.
It's included in the price, yeah.
And that was my question. As far as the audit fee itself, what does that include in total?
So, the audit itself, the single audit, federal grants, and in this case, CLA covers that IT, that separate IT audit. Anything beyond that, something we're looking into is the, it's known as the ACFER, so the Annual Comprehensive Financial Report. So, it's essentially, it's your yearly financial statements and at the end of it, you add a bunch of supplemental statements and schedules. That's yet another award that we're trying to go for in a few years. The only requirement with that is if, if you go for an ACFER, you have to have your audit done by the end of December, because you have to submit that to the GFO and all of that. So, the fee for that would be extra. All three said that it would be extra. It's not included in that base fee that they all bid, but that was expected. And they all seemed capable, you know, doing that. Obviously, a lot of the work will fall on finance because we have all of the data. But what was, what stood out about CLA is, you know, when you look at just like the value added, that IT, that cybersecurity audit, that's something, you know, that I think we, would be a good thing to, to do here.
Yep. I want to give a shout out to Paul and Marie and Brandon. You know, Brandon stepping off his success with Town Council, you know, supporting, you know, the RFQ and everything that needed to happen. Very good committee, very well organized. Presentations went very well, the reference checking went very well. Just a very smooth process in a very short period of time, you know? So, I just want to, you know, you know, acknowledge Paul's effort and the community's effort. Everybody showed up, everybody participated. This even goes back to Larry Oi, you know, who started this and then he stepped away and Paul took it over. So, this has really been, what, a three or four-year journey to get to where we are tonight? And I do think it was really a very, very good outcome. And when you're looking at audit firms, and I've been through this process many times as we've talked about it, there's not a whole lot you can differentiate between auditors, quite frankly, that's pretty rote in terms of what they do and how they do it, public or private sector, quite frankly, even though the rules differ in some regards, but it's very similar. So, you look for some differentiation in terms, and I think the IT was a real differentiation. You know, the fact that they really had a person dedicated that would really look into IT, IT infrastructure, what are the weaknesses, what are the problems, what are the exposures in the area of IT? You know, it's happening to everybody, you know, in terms of, you know, people, you know, getting into the system and what's the word I'm talking about, you know, the?
Hacking?
Not, not hacking, no.
Cyber, cyber risk or phishing?
No, no, not phishing. It's the, you know, they get a hold of your system and.
Oh, the ransom, the ransomware.
Ransomware. You know, that's, that's, that can happen to anyone.
That's terrifying.
And the fact that there's somebody with that expertise and there's a lot of different ways that you can protect yourself from ransomware, you know, that was a differentiator in terms of, you know, the CLA in particular. One of the firms thought we were already a client, so that didn't help them in terms of.
Yeah, there's a whole narrative where two of the presentations came in poorly edited, like some of them edited so poorly, there were paragraphs that stopped in mid-sentence. There were long endorsements of our current relationship with them when there was no relationship and, like Markham, this is Markham I'm talking about in particular, and our general feeling was if you can't get the details of a presentation package together, we don't want to give you our finances. And so, Markham came in the most expensive, but I think little things like that will, will submarine you as well. And there were a few in the Sahadi package too. They talked about, you know, having their office down the street from Town Hall, but they're located in Fall River, so I don't know. In terms of expertise, CLA and Markham were heads above Sahadi. In terms of systematic approach, Markham didn't even come in, or CBIZ didn't even come in with one. Sahadi and CLA both laid out, and I think this was important for Marie to see, which is what are the steps of the audit actually going to be, because it falls on her and Brandon, so at least she could vet how they'd be working with the auditors if they came in and whether it was going to work well. And so, that was true of both Sahadi and CLA, I would say, and Markham was pretty vague on that. And then capacity, it was pretty clear from the comments that the larger audit firms would be more responsive, but that's a matter of scale, right? They've got a ton of people. They talked about if you have a question and we don't know the answer to it, someone will know the answer to it and we'll get back to you as soon as we can. So, I think those are the big decision points we had. I don't know if you'd add anything. Paige, you were there, thank you for making that, all those meetings in the middle of the week. I don't know if you'd add anything to that?
No, I think you've covered it all. We were just, as you mentioned, for Marie's team, one of the benefits we had with the current firm is that they came in-house and they did a lot of the work here. And we wanted to make sure that these bigger firms that weren't necessarily going to be on-site, that Marie and her team weren't spending hours upon hours scanning documents and, and really delivering them the product. So, that was my main concern and I think the choice you made was the right one based on the feedback we got.
Yeah, and I'd note, from a committee structure standpoint, Paige and Marie are members of the committee, as is a school superintendent appointee, and Karen Sheridan was added to the committee. But even though they don't vote, we weren't going to move ahead with someone if they were not comfortable with them and in fact, if they weren't endorsing them. So, I was happy to see everybody aligned in favor of CLA, both the voting and ex-officio members.
I just want to add, one of the, the good things, or what comes up often is a management letter. Bob Brown's group, they only do a management letter if you have like something like severely wrong in the organization. That's why you typically don't see one from them. If we flag, like say if I'm concerned about a certain department and I send them over there, they'll go do an extra audit, you know, spend some extra time in that department. But it sounds like all three of these firms do, do a management letter. That's like a, a common thing that they do. They also do, so there's a management letter which would highlight kind of high-level, you know, concerns, but then they also do a separate kind of letter. I can't think of what they, can't remember what they called it. It was one of the firm, maybe two of the firms. If there's any, if they have any other recommendations of things that you can improve that aren't necessarily at the level of a management letter, they'll also issue you a separate letter, you know, flagging some of these, these things. And they all will help you with, like I was saying earlier, that ACFER report, they'll help you, they'll provide the templates for that. They help you write the, the management discussion and analysis, which goes at the beginning of the financial statements. And that's all included in the pricing, except the ACFER. But that's, like I said, that's a few years down the road.
I would just add, I've never worked with an auditor who didn't provide a management letter before. And even if there was not a finding of any kind, you always get a management letter. And all three of these auditors that we talked to, it just was part of the pro forma discussion, but we do not currently get one. So, I thought that was a little odd.
I think it's a critical tool for the Select Board to see that management letter.
I mean, it's, it's just a piece of paper that you can carry around as like your report card. It's like a single sheet of paper that you can share with anybody, right? And it just makes things easier when you've been audited, so. So, that's the proposal.
Any questions?
No.
I'm just going to mirror basically, you know, what Dennis said. Thank you so much. Wasn't too long ago that, I want to say probably three or four years ago, it might've been right after I got on the board, where we weren't hearing from the audit committee for a while. And I know Larry, you know, and I think even as we were changing town managers, like going from Bill to a new town manager, I think that year, we weren't going to do an audit, but then it was discussed that, it, that was just a good practice, you know, not that we thought we were going to find anything wrong, but it's just nice to know that, you know, from, from going from one town manager to another, that, you know, we know the new town manager's starting fresh. There's, you know, everything, everything looks good before, before the takeover. So, I know you guys worked really hard and, and now I just feel like we've, we've gotten, I didn't know much about how the audit worked before you guys, you know, started, you know, giving us the updates, but it's nice that we're, and that's, that's, this is, I'm learning. This is important stuff for us to know that we're in compliance and we're doing things the right way. So, again, a big shout out to all you and, and the rest of the Audit Committee. Dennis, you know, you, I know you put a lot of work into that as well and it's nice to know that we're, we're in a good path.
Thank you for that. Yeah, Larry did get it moving and the committee's been awesome. People made themselves available and were very active. It's a great group, so thank you on their behalf.
I think it's important to point out, because this will get reported, I'm sure publicly, that it's a no-way impunes the work done by Robert Brown over the years. There's nothing that indicates that he's done anything other than excellent work. This is really a best practice. You said it, Marie, five to seven years. You know, my experience is five to six years. You really need to either change out the auditor or change out the team. If you're large enough, they can change out the team. To have the same auditor for 20 years, it's just not a best practice. People get too comfortable with each other, they get too friendly with each other and things can happen, so.
They get comfortable and they say, "Yeah, I know that works. I've been looking at that for years. It's fine."
Fresh eyes are good.
They are.
Sometimes.
But it's, it's a no-way.
Not too often, but yes, every five to seven years would be good.
Yeah.
Right. So.
Good. All right. Need anybody else?
Nope.
All right. Yep. Let's.
Motion to support the Audit Committee recommendation of hiring Clifton Larson and Allen, CLA.
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Right.
Hi.
So, thank you, everyone, for that. I do have a second topic, which will go very quickly. I sent it to you in a note, but I'll just summarize it very quickly. So, because of the fact that everybody went off the committee for years and then we reformed it quickly, if you go back to the bylaw, the way the committee was set up is the terms were initially staggered and then they were converted to three-year terms. And that way, you've always got someone coming on, someone coming off, but you've stretched it out a little bit. What we just did is we appointed everybody at the same time. So, the entire Audit Committee is going to disappear at the end of next June. And if you, if people get reappointed, they're going to have the same situation three years after that. So, I don't know that there's anything you can do. I sent a note to Town Council. I don't know if they're on the line or if they have an opinion, but it's going to be an ongoing problem every three years, trying to restaff it, because this is a very difficult committee to staff. It's not just the volunteerism thing, it's the fact that you can only be on a certain number of committees. It's the fact that you need to have some financial background. And so, when I've talked to people about being on the Finance Committee, I mean, in the Audit Committee, do you need to have audit background? No, but do you need to be able to pick up a financial statement and not fight to get your way through it? Absolutely. You need to be able to pick it up and scan it. So, we're in a little weird situation that at the end of June, everybody's off. So, just letting you know. I don't know if there's anything you can do about it, but.
Well, it's no different than when we created committees. So, there is a way of doing that. There's a vehicle of appointing people. You could actually do something under a two, we'll appoint a number of them at two years, a number of them at three years, and you could even potentially appoint a couple of them at four years.
On four, yeah.
And then you get your cycle to work.
Okay. Do you have to read, is that a bylaw change or a town meeting vote or how does that work?
I think that's just a setup to, on the initial.
Policy.
Okay. Good. That makes things easier then.
Yeah, we'll just have to coordinate it, because I'm just looking at it now and it looks like we have Select Board appointments, school committee appointments and advisory. So, it's.
Yep.
We'll just have to figure out which, when, make sure maybe we stagger the, the Select Board appointments and so we'll come up with a plan for that for the next time they come up for appointment. So, maybe that, you know, obviously, they wouldn't do three. Maybe one would be for a year, two years, mix it up a bit to try to get to that staggered two years, mix it up a bit to try to get to that staggered point.
Yep, that works, and I can work on that. I just, when I come back to you, maybe suggesting a one- or two-year appointment, I didn't want it to be a surprise, so.
That makes sense, that'd be great. Thank you for thinking about it.
We just might not let any of you guys drop off.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks so much, guys. Okay, Katie, we're going to do, we're going to do all our.
My best.
Oh, yeah.
My best. Okay, so just a little bit of an overview. So we did 215 licenses this year, and that covers alcohol, common vicular, entertainment, and with an entertainment, that's your annual entertainment, your amusements, your arcades, and then all of our Class 1, 2, and 3 licenses. We have two Hackney driver appointments, so I have to read every single one. On your sheet, you will see that we had a refund of $1,000. That's because someone overpaid by accident of $1,000, and $4,000 was waived. That's because Laced Pizza and Pub, they still, even though I sent on all their paperwork the second meeting in September, it still has not been approved by the ABCC. Same for Laced Pizza and Augusta Subs and Salads, so we felt it was only right, they haven't gotten their 2024 at all, so that's an explanation there. So overall, collected $143,842, and then I collected $1,500 for the state, that's the Sunday entertainment license, so I collected, that's 15 businesses that have it, and I send it in, and they send me over their licenses, so. Any questions? Okay. Laced Pizza and Pub, 94 Washington Street, Maryland Rodman Performing Arts Center, 1 School Street, Papagino's, 8 Commercial Street, Papagino's/D'Angelo's, 211 North Street, Tropical Smoothie Cafe, 6 Foxborough Boulevard, Fat Tuesday, 26 Patriot Place, Starbucks Coffee, 74 Washington Street, Starbucks Coffee, 4 Foxborough Boulevard, Dunkin' Donuts, 221 Patriot Place, Dunkin' Donuts, 263 Main Street, Dunkin' Donuts, 30 Commercial Street, McDonald's, 212 North Street, Foxborough Mandarin Restaurant, 10 Foxborough Boulevard, Bangkok Cafe, 10 Foxborough Boulevard, Sweetness and Honey Bakery, 46 Central Street, The Commons Eatery and Cafe, 20 Central Street, Cupcake Charlie's, 262 Patriot Place, Normandy Farms Campground, 72 Washington Street, Pizza Time, 121 Main Street, Shaking Crab, 10 Foxborough Boulevard, Dairy Queen, 122 Main Street, Antonia's Italian Cuisine, 10 Foxborough Boulevard, Saga Hibachi Steakhouse, 295 Patriot Place, Gunther Tooties, 42 Central Street, Subway, 18 Central Street, Uncle Buck Snack Shop, 1 Bass Pro Drive, Dunkin' Donuts, 16 Washington Street, Dunkin' Donuts/Muskin Robbins, 127 Main Street, Foxborough House of Pizza, 34 Central Street, Jake and Joe's Sports Grill, 25 Foxborough Boulevard, Everything Bagel, 211 North Street, Skip Jack's, 226 Patriot Place, Showcase Cinema and Deluxe Patriot Place, 24 Patriot Place, Papagino's/D'Angelo's, 211 North Street, Papagino's, 8 Commercial Street, Maryland Rodman Performing Arts Center, 1 School Street, Fat Tuesday, 26 Patriot Place, Starbucks Coffee, 74 Washington Street, Starbucks Coffee, 4 Foxborough Boulevard, Bangkok Cafe, 10 Foxborough Boulevard, Foxborough Mandarin Restaurant, 10 Foxborough Boulevard, Normandy Farms Campground, 72 West Street, Shaking Crab, 4 Foxborough Boulevard, Saga Hibachi Steakhouse, 295 Patriot Place, Uncle Buck Snack Shop, 1660 Bass Pro Drive, Foxborough House of Pizza, 34 Central Street, Jake and Joe's Sports Grill, 25 Foxborough Boulevard, Showcase Cinema Deluxe Patriot Place, 24 Patriot Place, Maurice Cab of Foxborough, 26 Congress Place, Maryland Rodman Performing Arts Center, 1 School Street, The Country Store, 212 North Street, Fat Tuesday, 266 Patriot Place, Normandy Farms Campground, 72 Washington Street, Gulf Resources, 20 Washington Street, Foxborough Mandarin Restaurant, 10 Foxborough Boulevard, Bangkok Cafe, 10 Foxborough Boulevard, Shaking Crab, 4 Foxborough Boulevard, Saga Hibachi Steakhouse, 295 Patriot Place, Jake and Joe's Sports Grill, 25 Foxborough Boulevard, Skip Jack's, 226 Patriot Place, Foxborough House of Pizza, 34 Central Street, Showcase Cinema Deluxe Patriot Place, 24 Patriot Place, Foxborough Wine and Spirits, 14 South Street, Normandy Farms Campground, 72 West Street, Foxborough Auto Sales, 140 Washington Street, Showcase Cinema Deluxe Patriot Place, 24 Patriot Place, Station One by Shovel Town Brewery, 1 School Street, Wormtown Brewery, 250 Patriot Place, Splitsville/Howl at the Moon, 220 Patriot Place, Station One by Shovel Town Brewery, 44 School Street, Sonesta Select, Boston-Foxborough, 35 Foxborough Boulevard, Augusta Subs and Salads, 10 East Belcher Road, The Olive Garden Italian Restaurant, 392 Patriot Place, Menche's Patriot Place, 268 Patriot Place, Gillette Stadium, 1 Patriot Place, Foxborough Realty Associates, 1 Patriot Place, 99 Restaurant and Pub, 4 Fisher Street, Foxborough Country Club, 33 Walnut Street, Crumble Cookies, 222 Patriot Place, Hampton Inn and Suites, Foxborough/Mansfield, 2 Foxborough Boulevard, Extreme Craze, 30 Commercial Street, Renaissance Hotel at Patriot Place, and Hilton Garden Inn at Patriots Place, 28 Patriots Place, Ice Cream Beach Club, 10 Mechanic Street, Six String Grill and Stage, 275 Patriot Place, The Lafayette House, 109 Washington Street, Cell Street Pizzeria, 16 South Street, Ocholito's Taqueria, 265 Patriot Place, Tropical Smoothie Cafe, 222 Patriot Place, Five Guys Burgers and Fries, 269 Patriot Place, Curry Leaf, 29 Washington Street, Axel &amp; Burn Barbecue, 267 Patriot Place, Citizen Crest, 229 Patriot Place, Tabalino Restaurant, 274 Patriot Place, The Scorpion Bar Mexican Cantina, 253 Patriot Place, The Hart Patriot Place, 200 Patriot Place, Union Straw, 8 Mechanic Street, Wormtown Brewery, 250 Patriot Place, Fusion 5, 105 Washington Street, Crazy Axes, 202 Patriot Place, Sun Club Restaurant, 2 Washington Street, Ambroja, 2 Washington Street, My Pearl, 121 Main Street, Muse Paint Bar, 217 Patriot Place, Red Robin Americas Gourmet Burger and Spirits, 201 Patriot Place, Lakeview Pavilion, 45 Lakeview Road, Davio's Northern Italian Steakhouse, 1 Patriot Place, How Sushi, 70 Central Street, Mandarin Chef, 34 Mechanic Street, Foxborough VFW Post, 2626, 337 Coac acid Street, Scram Kitchen and Coffee, 6 Mechanic Street, Conrad's Restaurant, 121 Main Street, Bon Moy, 8 Wall Street, Bar Louis Tavern and Grill, 232 Patriot Place, Lovely Pizza, 6 Railroad Ave/Bird Street, Laced Pizza and Pub, 94 Washington Street, Foxborough Nutrition, 50 Central Street, Foxborough Sports Center, 10 East Belcher Road, Splitsville/Howl at the Mood, 220 Patriot Place, Station One by Shovel Town Brewery, 44 School Street, Sonesta Select, Boston-Foxborough, 35 Foxborough Boulevard, The Olive Garden Italian Restaurant, 392 Patriot Place, Gillette Stadium, 1 Patriot Place, Foxborough Country Club, 33 Wall Street, 99 Restaurant and Pub, 4 Fisher Street, Foxborough Realty Associates, 1 Patriot Place, Extreme Craze, 30 Commercial Street, Hampton Inn and Suites, Foxborough/Mansfield, 2 Foxborough Boulevard, Ice Cream Beach Club, 10 Mechanic Street, Lafayette House, 109 Washington Street, Renaissance Hotel at Patriot Place, and Hilton Garden at Patriot Place, 28 Patriot Place, Ocholito's Taqueria, 265 Patriot Place, Six String Grill and Stage, 275 Patriot Place, The Hart Patriot Place, 200 Patriot Place, Tabalino Restaurant, 274 Patriot Place, Curry Leaf, 29 Washington Street, Axel &amp; Burn Barbecue, 267 Patriot Place, Union Straw, 8 Mechanic Street, The Scorpion Bar Mexican Cantina, 253 Patriot Place, Citizen Crest, 229 Patriot Place, Wormtown Brewery, 250 Patriot Place, Fusion 5, 105 Washington Street, Crazy Axes, 202 Patriot Place, Sun Club Restaurant, 2 Washington Street, My Pearl, 121 Main Street, Davio's Northern Italian Steakhouse, 1 Patriot Place, Red Robin's Americas Gourmet Burgers and Spirits, 201 Patriot Place, Lakeview Pavilion, 45 Lakeview Road, How Sushi, 70 Central Street, Extreme Craze, 30 Commercial Street, Foxborough VFW Post, 2626, 337 Coac acid Street, Ambroja, 2 Washington Street, Conrad's Restaurant, 121 Main Street, Bar Louis Tavern and Grill, 232 Patriot Place, Laced Pizza and Pub, 94 Washington Street, Trader Joe's, 350 Patriot Place, Splitsville/Howl at the Moon, 220 Patriot Place, Sonesta Select, Boston-Foxborough, 35 Foxborough Boulevard, The Olive Garden Italian Restaurant, 392 Patriot Place, Foxborough Country Club, 33 Walnut Street, Gillette Stadium, 1 Patriot Place, 99 Restaurant and Pub, 4 Fisher Street, Hampton Inn and Suites, Foxborough/Mansfield, 2 Foxborough Boulevard, Six String Grill and Stage, 275 Patriot Place, The Lafayette House, 109 Washington Street, Ocholito's Taqueria, 265 Patriot Place, The Hart Patriot Place, 200 Patriot Place, Renaissance Hotel at Patriot Place, and Hilton Garden Inn at Patriot Place, 28 Patriot Place, Tabalino Restaurant, 274 Patriot Place, Union Straw, 8 Mechanic Street, Citizen Crest, 21 Patriot Place, The Scorpion Bar Mexican Cantina, 253 Patriot Place, Express Minimart, 126 Main Street, Fusion 5, 105 Main Street, Washington Street, excuse me, Quick Stop Beer and Wine, 79 Summer Street, Crazy Axes, 202 Patriot Place, Sun Club Restaurant, 2 Washington Street, My Pearl, 121 Main Street, Route 1 Wine and Spirits, 29 Washington Street, Red Robin Americas Gourmet Burgers and Spirits, 201 Patriot Place, Muse Paint Bar, 217 Patriot Place, Lakeview Pavilion, 45 Lakeview Road, Davio's Northern Italian Steakhouse, 1 Patriot Place, How Sushi, 70 Central Street, Foxborough VFW Post, 2626, 337 Coac acid Street, Conrad's Restaurant, 121 Main Street, Ambroja, 2 Washington Street, Axel &amp; Burn Barbecue, 267 Patriot Place, Bar Louis Tavern and Grill, 232 Patriot Place, Foxborough Auto Gallery, 130 Washington Street, Foxborough Automotive, 10 Main Street, Auto Rescue Towing and Recovery, 131 Moore Street, Central Street Garage, 385 Central Street, D Rounds Trucking, 1 Spring Brook Road, Del Zell Brothers, 157 Washington Street, Alliance Rental Group, 3 Phelps Road Drive, excuse me, A&amp;S Auto Export, 15 Twilight Drive, Congdon Auto Center, 6 South Street, Rodman Foreign Sales, 101 Washington Street, Auto East, 59 Washington Street, Moms Foxborough, 1,000 Washington Street, North Fox Auto Trading Company, 171 North Street, Rodman Ford Sales, 45 Washington Street, Jadco Auto Sales, 58 Leonard Street, Omega Pizza, 126 Main Street, Rally Point Inn and Pub, 9 Mechanic Street, Skip Jack's, 226 Patriot Place, Rally Point Inn and Pub, 9 Mechanic Street, Morado Setty Transportation LLC, 87 Mechanic Street, Splitsville/Howl at the Moon, 220 Patriot Place, Augusta Subs and Salads, 10 East Belcher Road, Rally Point Inn and Pub, 9 Mechanic Street, Al's Motor Company, 105 Main Street, Burnett Auto Works, 29R Wall Street, Auto Express, 95 Washington Street, and Booth Unleashed LLC, 16 Windsor Drive.
Can I ask a question, though? A lot of them are named three and four times, but we're not specifically calling out what each of the licenses that they're getting are, so why do we not just say they're named once?
That is a great question, Bill. I can follow up with town council on that.
Probably we should, like, we should probably start with common vic, and then read them, and then say.
Want me to read it again?
No. As read.
As listed.
Some of the places have three different licenses.
Right, yeah.
Right, it would be alcohol, entertainment, and then common vic.
Next year, you'll.
Yeah. We'll try to, yeah.
You'll say common vic first.
Thank you.
Awesome, thank you so much, Katie.
Yeah.
That's a lot of work. But do you remember, before Katie decided, took it over us, we split, we split that list up? Do you remember?
Well, we each took a page.
Yeah, we each took a, we each took a page. And Katie volunteered to do it, and bravo. Thanks so much.
And then we used to have to go and sign them all, sign every single one, long before all you guys died.
Oh.
Used to go up there with three pens for about two hours and sign every license.
Sorry to miss out on that.
And then we went with the stamp. That was a very glorious time.
Exactly.
Motion to approve the 2025 license renewals, including alcohol, common vicular, entertainment, auto, and movie theater, as read by Katie Lang.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, town manager's update, okay, all ready.
Oh, here's my report over here. Okay, so we have been informed by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, through the Massachusetts Clean Water Trust and the state treasurer, that the Foxborough's Chestnut Street Water Treatment Plan Improvements Project was awarded a loan forgiveness for a portion of its loan. So the loan for $10,250,000 will qualify for a subsidy in the amount of $1,383,750, which is equal to 13.5% of the original project cost. So the numbers are staggering, but it's nice to get, you know, 1.3 million forgiven, so that's great, and thank you to the DPW team for making that happen. Walnut Knoll is having an informational session at the COA. I think I've already mentioned this, but I do get questions on this all the time, so I want to make sure residents know that if you're curious about Walnut Knoll, which is the senior housing project being built up on Walnut Street, right on the intersection of 140, that there's going to be an informational session on January 29th at 2:00 p.m. Mark Craig, the human service director, has asked that folks register, and that's just because it helps figure out the amount of seating, and also if, for example, there was a snow day or some delay, that way he could send out an email and let folks know, and so it's for convenience. So please do give a call over there or go online to register, and I think he has many already registered. So if there's an overflow, perhaps we can get a second date, but for right now, we are able to manage it. The December newsletter is available, so anybody watching, please make sure you sign up, or you could just go to the front page of the website and read it there, but there is an opportunity to register, so that newsletters in the future will just show up in your mailbox. And we're trying very hard, Maura, every time she puts one out, it's time again, so, you know, we're already working on January, so we really are trying to stay current and provide more and more information to the residents. And if folks have suggestions or, you know, certain information they're looking for, we're always open for feedback in that regard, and if we can put something together and get the right people to respond, we will do so. We might eventually run out of things to talk about, but probably not. We do have an open seat on the GATRA, which is the Greater Atabaro Regional Transit Authority Board, so if anybody's interested in serving on that board, please let us know. There are also a few other open seats, and the website would have that information on other boards. In the bad news department, we did learn that the Taylor School is not, was not selected this year by the MSBA for funding, so, you know, we'll try again next year, and hopefully fourth time will be a charm. Bill, I don't know if you have any thoughts on that one? I mean.
No, I think what they've done is, when you look at the list that got it this time around, it was a lot of the large vocational schools, and obviously, we know that these high schools are sucking up hundreds of millions of dollars, so unfortunately, I really feel that this building, at 60 years old, that's really never been updated for the curriculum side of things, I'm having a hard time understanding the state's theory. It is a small project, it's, you know, you would think a couple of small ones in the mix with some of the bigger ones would make sense, but as you said, it's, you know, put the next attempt in and see what happens.
Try again, right. And the Board of Health has asked that we let residents know that there'll be Narcan training on December 27th at 11:00 a.m. right here in this meeting room, so if folks are interested, they can either show up or contact the Board of Health, but that is something, again, this is through our opioid funding, we're really trying to let residents know of the availability of training, and, you know, all of us might think it doesn't apply to us until it does, so it's not a bad idea to have that knowledge, and Narcan is free, so please reach out to the Board of Health if you have any questions. I have been asked by Maura to, and I wanted to just sort of let the board know and maybe get advice, we're still having the challenges with getting boards and committees to update their minutes and their agendas, so, you know, with your okay, I'd like to push a little harder with them to try to get, again, we're trying to be very transparent, and if it's a problem with someone not knowing how to do it, Maura is more than willing to either help them or show them, show them how to do it. We're trying not to do it all for them, but in worst-case scenario, we will do that, just to get them up there. So I'm going to work with Maura on that, but I wanted to let you all know that we're going to put a bit of a push on that, because we really want, you know, I was surprised to see what is missing, and even our star ones, maybe one or two are missing, so I'm going to push on that. I'm sure it's pretty intuitive to realize, but the holiday hours are coming up at town hall, so on Christmas Eve, town hall will close at noon, and it'll be closed on Christmas Day, but the town hall will be open regular hours on the day after Christmas, and then the Friday of Christmas week. And then on New Year's Eve, it's a Tuesday, so normally, we'd be open till 7:00 p.m., but I think I've mentioned before, we had staff take paid time off or make up their hours, because normally, they'd work till 7:00, but we're going to close town hall at 4:00. And then town hall will be closed on New Year's Day, but again, we'll reopen Thursday and Friday as normal. Of course, it's always a time for people to take vacation. I will be on vacation between Christmas and New Year's. It's a good time when things tend to be quiet to use vacation time. Human resources, we have some open positions. We have the Assistant Director of Public Work/Town Engineer still open. We've received a couple resumes, but we're hoping for at least one more. Building Custodian at the COA and Human Services, and then the three usual DPW Equipment Mechanic, DPW Labor Driver, and DPW Water Technician. We are taking a bit of an innovative approach with the mechanic because of the need for help down there, is we have a little apprenticeship going with an 18-year-old. It's on a, I think, a six-month basis, it's not permanent, but again, it gives that person the experience to work under a mechanic, and it also gives our mechanic some help, because we do, we are, we've been open, that position's been open a while, and we've been unable to fill it. So I thought that was a great, between Chris and Paige at Ocholito, they came up with that plan, and so we're thrilled at that opportunity. I believe they already have someone ready to go. And that is my update. I don't have a construction update this week, but things are wrapping up.
What was the Skip Jack's update?
I'm going to hold off on that, out of respect, they've asked us to hold off on that, so.
Okay.
Nothing scandalous, so.
I eat there a lot, so I was just.
Yeah.
The menu's changing.
You've got to find out. You need to know.
What about town property? Was there, was there something?
Do we have anything? Oh, I'm sorry.
Paige approved, the Boyd &amp; Library is going to do a mini Big Top Circus performance on the Town Common April 26th of next year.
Thank you for that.
They wanted to start performing it, promoting it.
I didn't have that on my report, so thank you for that.
Thank goodness we got that in.
I know.
Yes.
Okay.
The class would have been boring.
I know. Select Board update, just, you know, Paige had mentioned some holiday hours, just to remind people that our next meeting will, because of New Year's, our next meeting will be three weeks out, which will be January seventh, and I don't think I had anything else myself. Anybody have anything for selectmen's update, old or new?
Just FYI, at the last meeting, I said that I would try to plug into the Norwood Hospital calls, and just as I said that, they stopped the calls.
They heard you were coming.
I don't know if, I might call them, I don't know if they're going to resume them or not, but for, right now, they've stopped the calls.
Yeah, I saw the email. That's funny, and I guess maybe, go ahead.
Yeah, one more, like, quick little anecdotal thing, I see the signs for the veterans are up, or some of them are up, and the one right here for Gary Hall is up, and Gary Hall, believe it or not, was my intermediate school gym teacher from Sharon, and growing up, you know, we, a couple of years after, you know, World War II, we heard, you know, quite a bit of the fact that he was a quite heroic gentleman during war, and when I was speaking at Veterans a couple of years ago, it was also a tribute to Jack Othlet, and I had talked about Jack's book, about locals being in World War II, and when I read that book, I read about Gary Hall, and it came full circle with me as a kid hearing that, you know, he was a Silver Star recipient, he was a medic, he was a Purple Heart recipient, and, you know, I'm telling the story about, you know, how we all looked up to him in school and stuff like that, and after I had spoken, the chairperson of the senior chorus came up to me, Mrs. Hall's wife, you remember that?
I know her.
Mrs. Hall's wife was in the chorus, and she wanted to meet me, and we went up, and she was also a teacher in Sharon, and was just a good, it was, it was kind of funny, small-world circle of coming together, and then when I walked here, I see Mr. Hall's is right here on Town Hall, it was awesome, and again, coincidentally, he just got named, I believe, they named the Sharon football field after him a couple of weeks ago, in Sharon, so.
And another coincidence is the one person, when I was leaving one day, was driving around the parking lot, and I said, oh, who are you looking for? And they said, George Hall, and I said, oh, Mr. Hall, right there, you know, I helped her find him, so it's, that's the only one that anybody's ever called out to me out there on the parking lot, and it's Mr. Hall.
But bottom line, they look great.
They do look great.
Yeah, absolutely.
They did, that was Ed Butler, he did a great job. So I guess we should, you know, throw a shout-out to the Foxborough Vasee Football Team for a great try to repeat, didn't happen, but, you know, some of those, some of those games, fourteen-nothing wasn't bad. I know, I know people were hoping that we were going to have a second, a second Super Bowl victory, but, you know, kudos, great, great season, and they, they started off a little slow, and they rarely-
Started slow, rallied in the middle.
The steam came, and, you know, and got their all, and I guess Shawshank wanted, they wanted to redeem themselves from last year, because they got knocked out for us to get in the Super Bowl, but anyhow, congratulations to all those young men and coaches and the cheerleaders and everybody else involved, you know, to another, another great season. Didn't end how they wanted, but great season anyhow. Anybody else have anything?
Nothing.
All right, okay. Okay, we're on to our action items.
Motion to approve the request for committee appointment application submitted by Paul Dumas to be appointed to the Norfolk County Advisory Board for a term to end May thirty-first, twenty-twenty-five.
Second.
Any other discussion?
Is this just filling a open position for a short period, because it's only-
It is.
A few months, okay.
Yeah, nobody's, Mr. Dumas was trying not to, I think, but now it's been vacant, so he's admirably stepped up, and in fact, the first meeting is tomorrow. Awesome. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to approve Steve's Lakeview Inc., DBA Lakeview Pavilion, forty-five Lakeview Road, extended hours request for all Sundays in twenty-twenty-five to begin alcohol service starting at ten A.M.
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Nervy Inc., DBA Ambrosia, two Washington Street, request for extended hours request for December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-four, to extend the entertainment license hours to two A.M., January first, twenty-twenty-five.
Second.
Okay, under discussion, we, when we were setting the agenda, we, there was a quick discussion, and we thought we could just make this an action item, just to, you know, there was a lot of discussion with them, you know, last year, and just so that, obviously the board knows, we haven't heard any, anything else, and people at home, just because there was, we had them in quite a few times, and Katie, let me let you elaborate a little bit, just, and Paige probably, you know-
Yeah, there's been no issues with, there's been no, none of the inspectors, health, building, had any concerns, and Katie, you spoke to public safety, and they had no concerns with it, with the caveat that liquor service is not extended.
That ends at eleven, right?
No, that ends at, well, one, but, you know, one A.M. is the, but so at that point, no alcohol, even on the tables after one A.M., you know, that they can be in the building, and there will be a police detail present for that event.
Yeah, and maybe just, maybe just a reminder, I mean, normally with the one o'clock license, you would be, you know, giving a last call-
Like twelve-thirty?
Between twelve-thirty and twenty minutes of, just because the last thing you want to do is hand somebody a drink, and then somebody's taking, taking it away, and so maybe just, can we just maybe give them a reminder, K, and maybe they already have, just that, you know, obviously, their liquor license, so even though they're going to have the license till two, that they really should be given a last call around twelve-thirty, you know, whatever their normal, their normal time is to be done.
Of course.
You know, especially, especially on, on New Year's, you know, people, you know, you don't want them to not have time, and the other thing is, regardless of whether they may be there for another hour, the last thing you want them is guzzling it down, because you don't know if they're staying till two, that's the last thing you want, it's the last drink of the evening to be almost, a drink, but to be almost like a shot, so just, you know, you know, and they've done a lot to bring themselves to good graces, and the last thing we want to see is, like, something else that brings us, brings them before us again, so.
Has it always been two A.M.?
No, our lessons is one, but where they're asking for an extension for, just for New Year's, but liquor, liquors, liquor is going to be one, one o'clock, like a normal. So, and I think, did, did we? No, not last year, because-
Some places actually do like an after thing with coffee and, like, breakfast-type foods, and so that may be why they're asking for it, but I don't know.
Yeah, yeah, it's not, it's really not a bad idea, you know, before people, you know, are taking, taking off to get on the roads, and we don't have to remind them, I'm sure they're going to, their, their alcohol service will be up two-packs, we don't have to remind them about that, and not to pick on them, but, you know, they did a good job to get themselves to where they are, we just don't want to see them back in front of us again.
And just as an aside, not related to Ambrosia, but that property, San Calp, the other operation, provided lunch to all the Town Hall and public safety today, just on their own, they delivered food to us, so it was very kind of them, and delicious, so.
Yeah, I was going to say somebody, but I think, Jimmy? Yeah, Bill, didn't you, didn't you say you guys-
Yeah, I'd gone there as well, I know you've gone there as well, I thought the food was excellent, and, and it was very busy when I was there, so it's good to say.
It's good, because as, as new, I know they're coming into the existing property, but they have their own little spin going on, and it's nice to see that it's going well. Yeah, great. All right, all those in favor?
Second.
Aye, it was a long discussion.
Motion to accept the donation from Foxborough Animal Hospital in the amount of three-hundred-and-forty dollars to assist with the car and Christmas lights.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Minutes.
Yep, motion to approve the select board meeting minutes from December third, twenty-twenty-four.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
I was just thinking of Merry Christmas.
Obviously, under discussion from this entire board, we wish everybody Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, whatever you do to celebrate, Happy New Year, happy and safe, and we will be happy to see everybody in two thousand twenty-five.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.